I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Here.
Councilmember Salaah Houdin?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Black History Month, and I would like to have one of our staff members, Jen Harrison, join us. Whereas in—let me read it from here—whereas in 1986, the United States Congress and Senate passed Public Law 99-244, designating February as National Black Afro-American History Month; and whereas called on United States President Ronald Reagan to issue a proclamation stating, "The foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity to celebrate the many achievements of Black Americans in every field, from science and the arts to politics and religion." And whereas since 1996, United States Presidents have issued annually theme-based proclamations for National Black History Month. The theme for 2024 is African-Americans and the Arts, honoring their numerous and significant contributions, including Lorene Vivian Hansberry. And whereas a playwright and writer, Hansberry was the first Black American female author to have a play, A Raisin in the Sun, highlighting the lives of Black Americans in Chicago, living under racially segregated housing covenants, performed on Broadway. And whereas Carter G. Woodson, an academic who earned a PhD in history from Harvard, sought to heal and unify America by sharing the significant history and contributions of the Black American experience. In 1926, he established Negro History Week in February. And whereas to those interested in learning more about the origins of Black History Month and this year's theme, visit the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History's website at asalh.org. Now, therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month, and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the history and challenges faced by Black Americans, and paying tribute to this community for its strength, perseverance, character, and contributions, all of which enrich our lives. And with that, I'd like to present this proclamation to Ms. Harrison. And I'll—after we're going to take a picture, I'm going to ask her to say a few words if she would like.
My name is Jan Harrison, and I am the DEI Program Advisor for the City of Redmond, and it is a pleasure to be able to not only talk the talk, but walk the walk by standing here and joining you this evening in receiving this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much again for coming this evening. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci. Councilmember Balducci, please come on up to the podium.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Council President, our newly-elected Council members, and all of you. Thank you so much for giving me a little bit of time tonight to give a report from King County. I like to do this at least once a year. Sometimes during COVID especially, we didn't live up to that, but I like to come and just make sure that you all are aware, as a district, as a city that is represented, two-thirds of which is represented in District 6, my district, what we're doing at King County, so that we can partner together. We're doing this old-school. I handed out some papers. I apologize for those who are online, but we're happy to forward the presentation. And I just want to cover a few things that are happening at King County in 2024, and take any questions you may have. So, starting with just introducing my work this year, I will be in leadership positions as Chair of the King County Council Committee of the Whole, where we have a number of countywide issues, including gun violence prevention, which I'll talk a little bit about later. I'm chairing our Regional Water Quality Committee. It's not the thing that most people think about when they think about King County, because it is all about our sewer system, but if we didn't have it, we would know it, and we wouldn't have a very, very sustainable county. I also continue to chair Sound Transit's System Expansion Committee on the Board at the Sound Transit Organization, and the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council. So these are some of the things I'll be working on this year. The first thing I want to talk to you about tonight is the King County budget. As you may be experiencing, our revenues at King County are not keeping up with our expenditures, and we are facing between $80 million and $100 million shortfall in our general fund this year. Our budget is significantly bigger than that, is about $16.2 billion on a biennial basis, but most of the funds that we receive, as are many of the funds that you receive, are dedicated. They're dedicated levies, or it's solid waste rates, things that can only be used for the purpose that we receive them for. So the general fund tends to be the place where all the flexible funds are, and that is significantly smaller and facing really difficult budget cuts. And we'll be working on that in two ways this year. One way is that we are in Olympia, talking to our legislators about the fact that they have maintained an artificial cap on property taxes, so that while our costs can go up by any percentage, our property taxes can only go up by 1%, and that is a recipe for an unaffordable county. We're also looking at efficiencies and budget cuts on the expenditure side that we'll be talking about later in the year. Okay, moving on to transportation, some good news. It was really fun recently to celebrate the opening of the Overlake Village Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge across 520. Many of you were there. It was a really happy occasion, and that is the first of what will be many openings over the next two years, including significantly later this spring, we will be opening the first light rail on the east side from South Bellevue to the Redmond Technology Station. And we are so close to having a date to announce that opening. I sure hope to see you all there and ride the train with you when that day comes. And we are still on track to open to the rest of the region and downtown Redmond in 2025. So hopefully, the next time we're having this conversation, we will be very, very close to having the full east side light rail system that we have planned. I also, on transportation, would like to touch on regional traffic safety. You all may be tracking, as I am, that there is an unacceptable increase nationally and in our state and locally in serious traffic injuries and fatalities, and that this is something that we see—it's kind of unique to the United States. It's not something that happens all over the world. So at the Regional Council, we've been working on trying to encourage a safe-system approach to transportation. We've been doing education, we've adopted policy, and critically, we just adopted a framework for about three-quarters of a billion dollars in our next federal pass-through funding cycle that will be—it will be required that jurisdictions are working on a safe-system approach in order to be eligible for this funding, and the funding will go to help support that planning and support projects that make our roadways much safer. So this is something to watch, and I think Redmond will do very well by this, because I know you have—you know, you're well along in your road-safety journey yourself. A word on housing and homelessness. Since I'm flipping, you're just going to have to bear with me a little bit. I have a whole thing that—I'm delivering this presentation to all of the cities in the district. There's nine of them, but I don't have to say this here, because you've already done it. We have adopted countywide comprehensive planning policies—say that quickly—that require, for the first time, as you all know, that jurisdictions accommodate affordability in housing, not just housing targets and job targets without regard to how much the jobs pay and the housing costs, but actually plan for affordability, something we've never done before at the Affordable Housing Committee and the Growth Management Planning Council. We came up with a way to pass through the targets—the large countywide targets we were given by the state—and have every single city and the county take responsibility for a goal for all levels of affordability. And Redmond was a pioneer. You were one of the first two jurisdictions to come to the Affordable Housing Committee with your proposed housing element and take feedback that we've agreed to as a region to give each other and ourselves as a supportive kind of accountability framework. King County was the other pioneer. So we are ahead of the curve and well on the way to making a really big difference for people to be able to afford to live here. I want to recognize and appreciate this council for passing tenant-protection regulations. The way we get through housing together is—it's about supply, it's about subsidy, and it's about stability, and without people being able to stay in their homes, we'll never—we'll never get there. But—so this work is going to be for the rest of the year. We'll be working at King County and at the Affordable Housing Committee, reviewing all the housing elements. So there's only 38 more to go, and we'll hopefully get through them by the end of the year. At the Regional Homelessness Authority, again, you are very well represented in this area. Mayor Burney is on the governing board, along with myself and others. It's a building year. We're going to be hiring new leadership. We have been building up with new financial leadership, and we'll continue to work towards the sub-area plans, the rebid of the whole system—the whole service system—through our nonprofit partners, and continuing to collect and improve data so that we know what we're dealing with and that we can be more effective, and I urge you to keep an eye on that work as well. All right. On public safety, and I really wish I could show this to you. There's a slide—if you have—I handed out hard copies. A lot of work is going into gun violence prevention at King County. It is a very big problem. The data that's shown in that scattergram on the slide is from the second quarter 2023. This is every known shot fired in King County. You can see all this data on the prosecuting attorney's website. You can see that it is a problem everywhere. There's almost no place in King County that does not have a gun violence challenge. And this year, the county executive, the mayor of Seattle, and the Sound Cities Association are joining together to create a gun-violence regional approach. We've had our first meeting. I was really proud to be there to represent King County, and that work will be going forward in partnership with the federal government and support from the Biden Administration. We'll also be working to implement the Crisis Care Centers levy that passed last year, and we'll create, as you know, five crisis care centers, four for adults, one for juveniles, in order—all over King County, so that people can—who are having a mental health crisis or behavioral health crisis need to be brought somewhere—can be brought somewhere where they can receive treatment and support, as opposed to being brought to jail or an emergency room. That implementation plan will come through the county council and the Regional Policy Committee, again, where you are well represented by Mayor Burney, and that's already in process, so we'll be talking about that in the near future. And finally, on public safety, I want to mention the care and closure process that you may have read about recently. The county executive committed some years ago to close our juvenile detention facility in 2025, and there has been a lot of dedicated work, deep study, work with community, to figure out how to reinvent our juvenile justice system so that it is more geared towards creating successful outcomes for everyone involved. If fewer youth get involved in crime, there are fewer victims, youth have a better path to success as adults. It's a win-win all the way around. They've come out recently with recommendations. There's a lot of work yet to be done, and this is still very much in discussion and study. The headline probably is that the executive has said that we're not going to be prepared to close the juvenile detention facility in 2025, and has been—that has been put off until a future date unspecified, probably at least three years down the road, as we work on ways to transform the system so that we can provide safety and better futures for our youth and address the—as you were acknowledging—Black History Month, the persistent and, in fact, worsening racial inequities in the system. Okay. I think I'm getting there. Just a word on arts and culture. As you probably know, we passed, after almost 20 years of work, the Cultural Access Washington Program, now called Doors Open, that will provide $800 million over seven years through arts, culture, history, and science throughout King County. The one thing the King County Council did, supported, again, by the Regional Policy Committee, was to ensure that a significant amount of this funding will be available to jurisdictions outside of the large cultural sector in downtown Seattle, so that we can grow and expand access throughout the county. That's going to be an incredible opportunity. We'll be working on that implementation plan this year, and I am committed to making sure that we see that resource show up in Redmond and throughout King County. There is a slide that shows some of the community's support that we've been able to provide in the last year. Let's see if I can find it. I ripped my thing apart. I cannot. I will report about that at another time, but I will point you—so this is what's coming up. What happened last year is written in this flyer that I passed around, and I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you for being interested in the work of King County. We are partners, and we only succeed together, and I'm very happy to represent two-thirds of Redmond and King County and to work with you in the coming year.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Balducci. It's always wonderful to have you here, and I really appreciate you doing kind of a year wrap-up of what's happened and what's going on, so thanks for being here. Are there any questions for the councilmember? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Balducci, for being here and checking in, and it was awesome to see you in what is soon to be one of the best and most happening neighborhoods in your jurisdiction. So we'll have a lot of parties in Overlake this year, so thanks so much. I do have a question on the timeliness of the executive's implementation plan for the Crisis Care Levy that has dropped. You all are going to be spending a bunch of time on that in the near future. What kind of feedback would be helpful from cities like ours as you all go through that process?
Well, we just had the first briefing on it today, and it's in a committee that I don't sit upon, so I would love to take that question back, think about sort of what the issues are, and respond to it, because I'd love to hear from Redmond in ways that would be helpful. I think the—some of the key questions are going to be about siding, as it always is, where to put them. How do we both have a competitive process that gets the best efficient, financially-efficient implementation while also spreading them out in a way that makes sense for the folks who are going to be asked to take people to these facilities? So they're—and that's a developing question, so I think you might be interested in that, and I'll certainly respond. And I mean—I keep looking at council—our new councilmember—I'm going to call him Councilmember Osman, because he's Osman to me, my neighbor down the hall. We will be tracking this, along with Councilmember Perry's office, I should say, and we'll keep in touch with you as this goes forward. It will come to RPC, so you'll get—you'll get input in that direction as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Council Vice President Forsyth, and then Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. Really excited to hear about the Doors Open arts funding. I actually worked on that when it was access for all back in the day, so very, very excited to have this happen. There's been a lot of talk in our community about arts and space for arts, so hopefully we can see some of that money coming to Redmond in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work on this. I just—I agree with you. It's so important to education, to building community, to having, again, those successful outcomes that we want to see in our communities. I'm absolutely committed to working with you to make sure that Redmond benefits from this program.
Council President Kritzer, willing.
It's great to see you, Councilmember Balducci. Thank you so much for the update. Very informative. And I just wanted to commend you for your work on the Affordable Housing Committee, and thank you for letting Redmond go first in terms of having our housing element reviewed. It actually was, you know, such a useful process, great for our council to be able to read the really detailed analysis that the staff at the county did, and kudos also to our staff on their amazing work. Tonight, we're actually reviewing an updated housing element, and I see some of the changes in it that came from some of that feedback. For example, there's a whole really great section all about exclusionary land use in housing that has a detailed timeline of kind of how housing has developed in our city, and that was one of the pieces of feedback, for example, that we got. So just want to say thank you to you and to your staff for all of that great work, and to be able to also make sure that, across our county, that we're all doing our part to be able to solve our housing needs.
Right. Thank you so much, and that's really great to hear. I mean, the whole—the whole concept behind the distribution of goals and then the accountability work is that we're all in this together. We all have to do our part if there's going to be enough housing throughout King County, and Redmond has just been such a leader in so many ways, and we really appreciate that partnership. And I think you've made it—a set of examples—a really good example for those who are going to come after, that, you know, you embrace the challenge and really did, in fact, more, I think, than you—you needed to, because you have such a value for housing here, and I really—that's commendable, too. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Fields, and then Salaah Houdin.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for being here. You know, one of the things that I've tried to create a lot of awareness, and the council has also had a lot of discussions, is what you mentioned about the rise in lack of safety on our roads. And nationally, it's a pretty grim picture. Councilmember Khan and I went to Transportation Conference last year, and we heard quite a bit about the hundreds of thousands of people who are injured, life-changing injuries. And here's my request to you. Don't need a whole lot of discussion from you tonight, but I'm just asking. I know that there's been a lot of talk about cameras and traffic control cameras. I'm hoping that the county and other jurisdictions recognize the value from a safety perspective rather than a revenue-generating perspective, and actually get to the heart of what's causing accidents: reckless driving, distracted driving, people falling two feet off the bumper, people cutting red lights when they had plenty of warning from an orange light. So whatever the county can do to make our roads safer is greatly appreciated by me and all of the other people who are riding bikes and walking and driving cars and riding motorcycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. It's certainly a key tool, and one of the challenges that we all need to work through and that the county is actually working through right now with other jurisdictions is the backend of cameras. So they are—they're critical, and I support the use of bus cameras, for example, for people who are sort of encroaching on bus lanes and school buses. And then, there's a whole managing of the output of the video and providing it and prosecuting the fines, and so I agree with you 100%, and we need to work on it to make sure that we get the—we get the administrative part right, so we can get the safety benefit that you talk about. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Just wanted to say thank you so much for joining us here today and sharing all of the work that you're—you and your staff are doing. I did want to call out for everyone in the room, without, you know, having these slides in front of you, just you being a champion for the east side starter line. I know—I mean, even to Councilmember Fields's point, more people on light rail would potentially lead to fewer cars on the road, it would lead to safer streets. And so just all across the board, thank you so much for, you know, getting us to where we are today, and all of your work. I know you've been, you know, hard at work to do, you know, to make sure that the light rail, you know, the project phases into how we can get it here today, and excited to see what's to come.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. I'm going to be riding it all day one Saturday soon, so come on out, and I'll be on. You'll find me.
Perfect.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you, Councilmember Balducci, for being here, and as a new councilmember, I truly deeply appreciate this, to give me a high-level overview of things. It's so welcomed. I truly appreciate it. A question around the youth detention center, as that date is being pushed out, and we've got really exciting things—I mean, I'm very excited for east side—for east side King County, because the next few years are going to be incredible. And while we're doing that, we're also pushing out this date to 2028, maybe. So we're pretty loose on that. What is—do we—excuse me. Do we have a transition plan for a while that is being put out to 2028 or thereabouts? Do we have something to where there's something for the interim, so that it's not nothing until then?
Excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember. We have a number of diversion programs, and it's a full spectrum from what you'd call sort of pre-filing diversion, or a young person gets into some kind of trouble, maybe is picked up by law enforcement, but no charges are ever filed. They are put into community-based programming. We have a program that's called Restorative Community Pathways. Sorry, there's also Restorative Community Passageways, different program. This is Restorative Community Pathways, and that is a complete diversion program, and it is—it is community-based, it is focused on separating from the criminal justice system entirely, and just sort of helping young people to succeed. And that is a—you can be referred to that even if you have committed a felony. It's rather controversial for this reason, and we just put about, I think, another $1.5 million into making sure—it's a pilot—it's in the pilot stage, but making sure that this works, because it's showing some really early promise, because what you want is, a young person does something and harms somebody. We've got to address that harm. We can't pretend it didn't happen, but we don't want to see that kid back again. And putting them in detention, we know that that—it makes it much more likely that this kid will start to cycle, and will cycle into adulthood, and then you just have this sort of negative—this entire negative cycle. So we are, in fact, doing right now—we've always had a very, very well-respected juvenile detention alternatives program to detention. We went from when I first started at the county, we would see 200 or so kids on average per night in the juvenile detention facility. It is now down around 40 or so per night, and a huge part of that drop was due to policy changes that have been made over time to—in recognition of the fact that detention doesn't help. So we'll keep doing that. We're not going to stop building out our practice while we're working on the transformation of the system that will, in theory, enable us to have spaces that are more trauma-informed and less harmful than a large detention facility, but we're not there yet. The report does say one thing I want to say here, and that is, we need to know that we have a system that works from, you know, at all stages, before we're ready to let go of having a place to put youth who may be a danger to themselves and others, and we're trying to build that and then transition. There's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of work still happening, and I really appreciate your heart for that. Thank you.
Any other questions this evening?
Well, I want to say thank you very much for your partnership. You know, you're always great to work with. We get to see each other a lot on many committees, but I'm also really excited about—to echo about getting the two-line starter line up and running. Really excited about that happening soon, and hope to see not just you, but everyone in our community out there and riding the trains. So thank you so much. Come back anytime. We look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you for your time tonight. It's good to see you.
The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorkouncil@redmond.gov. And the views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. And written comments have been forwarded to the council this evening, and no one signed up remotely. So I will start with our first person. I usually call up the first few names, so you know when you're coming up. I'm going to start with Linda Seltzer, then Paul Quinn, then Alex Zimmerman, and then David Martin.
In the city of Redmond, it is incumbent upon us to proclaim two diverse inclusive observances. January 27th was Holocaust Remembrance Day, and February is Black History Month, so two proclamations. These two histories share the experience of racism and persecution. In the late 1900s, in a project called Lebensraum, Germany invaded southwest Africa and instituted slave labor, persecuting the indigenous Herero, Nama, and Hoetan peoples. The Africans' rebellion was brutally crushed by 14,000 German soldiers who massacred the emaciated people. Others were transported to the first concentration camps called Konzentrationsschlagger for forced labor to German companies. This was rationalized by racist German ideology, the Orient race as superior, and others being subhuman. After World War I, Africans conscripted into the French Army were brought to Germany, which responded with a wave of racism, which even US President Warren Harding participated in. in. This included the racist pseudoscience of eugenics, in which horrible atrocities were committed against the Africans in the concentration camps. Years later, Hitler's Second Command was garing, whose father had been the governor of southwest Africa and initiator of the massacre of the Hereros. Franz Ritter von Epp, of the Herera massacre, was the first in Germany to hire and encourage Hitler. The Jews in Germany were transported to concentration camps by the Nazis. The mass shootings with people left to die in Africa were repeated by the Nazis and their colleagues throughout Germany and Eastern Europe. Eugenics continued with the Nazis. Jewish and black people today face similar persecution in 2023 from terrorist extremist attacks. Hamas terrorists violated a ceasefire and attacked Israel on October 7th. Hamas's charter advocates the killing of Jews killed 1,200 and injured 10,000, and since then, 15,000 rockets and missiles were fired on Israel. In November 2023, CNN reported that the terrorists in Sudan said they wanted no black people there and killed 9,300 and committed similar atrocities.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Quinn, then Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then David Haynes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I live in Sammamish, and I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. What I'm sharing about Redmond came through public record requests. Let's start with a reminder, you've heard me say before, that King County survey of trash sent to the landfill shows two-thirds of what we send to the landfill could be either recycled or composted. So two-thirds of our trash is actually not trash, good to remember that. The first handout that Cheryl sent to you, I think on my behalf, is, shows the disposal numbers updated with Redmond's full year 2023 versus 2022. So in Table 3, kind of halfway down, you see that our diversion rate is worse in 2023 versus 2022. So Redmond, a very progressive city in so many ways, has taken a step back in recycling and composting in 2023. Let's make 2024 a year to dramatically improve the city's diversion rates. In this meeting, I'm going to walk through some of the recommendations noted in the second of the three handouts you've got. I recommend a more robust communication program in each newsletter sent to residents, providing the city's current diversion statistics and tips for improving the rates of recycling and composting. Let's tell your residents how they're doing in diversion and how they can improve. The city should initiate a program to provide each household and business a free indoor recycling container and free countertop kitchen scraps container. Typically, I've seen your disposal company will help defray these costs. The city could change pickup schedules to have garbage picked up every other week while retaining every week pickup for recycling and compost. I suggest the city pass ordinances to require all 2,282 remaining single-family homes utilize a food scrap yard waste barrel. All businesses serving the public to make available a recycle container. That would include some of the 87 remaining businesses that don't have one. All businesses serving the public to make available a food scraps container. The city could pass an ordinance to require all 78 remaining multifamily locations make available a food scrap yard waste container, 78 don't have one. Let's make recycling and composting simpler when a resident is working with a Redmond business by requiring each business to work with a disposal company to assure all public-facing disposal containers match those used by residents. This would increase accuracy of disposal of materials. These matters have urgency, as Redmond sends 1,600 tons every month to the landfill. I believe in the city of Redmond, and I want, I believe the city residents want to live sustainably. They need the tools and leadership of the council to up their game in recycling and composting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Zimmerman, then David Morton, then David Haynes.
My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I explain to you what's going on. What is, right now, we have new era in America is government antisemitism. This has come from District 6 under Council Belvi supervision, it's very interesting. So they elect Iranian Muslim Mohammed Malakatian, you know what it means, for Council, Bellevue Council. It's okay with me, I'm not care about this, but they appoint him.
Point of order?
They appoint him.
Yes? The Speaker is speaking on elections.
Election, you're talking? Why are you interrupting? Are you so stupid?
Excuse me, Speaker. Councilmember, he is mentioning another individual in a different council, but he is not speaking, he is not campaigning. We have gotten PDC filing, and what we have been allowing has been permitted, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm willing to turn on your microphone again, but I need you to continue speaking and not respond to the councilmembers at this time.
Speaker, for the last three months, in every meeting around, about this, yeah. They appoint Iranian Muslim Mohammed Malakatian, Deputy Mayor, is a key to everything. First, it show, so Bellevue Council, you know what it means, support Amazon, because his work for Amazon is a pure fascism, is a classic fascism, when government support corporation. I think Mussolini did this, yeah. But this have another two faces from this. And face number two in this situation is government antisemitism. Why they did this? He's Iranian Muslim, you know, Iranian hate Jew, you know what it means, for thousand years. Why they doing this? Why they show this? So they hate Jew? It's okay with me, nothing changed for the last 5,000 years. And number three, what is very important, you know what it means, is because they hate America. We have war right now, we Iran, and American people dying every week right now. So why they show? So they support our enemy? But in all civilized country, when you support enemy, you supposed to be going jail or execute? Is this dead this legally? We support people like you, because you all say this, a problem what is we have right now. It's a democratic junta who totally hate America. Is this everywhere, without exception, in King County? Yeah, so I want to explain to you guys, it's absolutely idiotic situation, you know what it means? Support us enemy. You understand, baby?
Next up is David Morton, and then David Haynes.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. Addressing climate change is of utmost importance to Redmond's future. I'm advocating for two vital climate-related actions that can help Redmond be more sustainable and resilient. First, please consider and support the adoption of a city-building code amendment that mandates the installation of EV charging capability at all parking stalls for future multifamily buildings and commercial parking lots. Encouraging the use of electric vehicles is a key element in promoting sustainable transportation. Adopting such a building code amendment will help Redmond move towards cleaner and more environmentally-friendly options, and aligns with the greenhouse gas reduction targets set by Redmond and King County. The availability of EV charging stations will have a profound impact on Redmond's air quality. Electric vehicles produce zero tailpipe emissions, produce no air pollution, and thereby benefit public health. Installing citywide EV charging capability can enhance sustainable economic competitiveness by attracting environmentally-conscious businesses and residents. EV range anxiety is another compelling reason to embrace this change. With charging stations readily available, electric vehicles will become a more viable and attractive option for consumers. The inclusion of EV charging stations in Redmond's building code can future-proof Redmond's infrastructure and ensures that new developments are equipped for the increasing prevalence of electric vehicles without the need for costly retrofitting in the future. Second, I strongly advocate for the implementation of emissions performance standards for existing buildings. For example, Seattle's Building Emissions Performance Standard Policy requires commercial building owners to submit Energy Star scores, which is an important step in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving building energy efficiency. Buildings are a significant source of greenhouse gas emissions, and these standards can help Redmond to meet its emissions reduction targets by focusing on energy efficiency and promoting responsible energy use. Implementing building emission standards will signal a commitment to sustainable practices and will enhance economic competitiveness. It sends a message that Redmond is dedicated to creating a resilient and environmentally responsible community that attracts investment and in businesses aligned with these values. In conclusion, these two actions are not just about addressing climate change, they will help shape a sustainable and prosperous future for Redmond and demonstrate a commitment to a cleaner, healthier, and economically competitive community. Please consider and support these actions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have David Haynes.
For the record, the individual who works for the government who's not out here right now, he was in the bathroom before council meeting started, he did not wash his hands after he went to the bathroom, and I saw him touching this whole side of the microphone. So you can't touch the door handle, and you can't touch this. And anyway, I want you to know that last night, there was a fire and an explosion in an unauthorized encampment around 8:25 PM, just across some Estera Park, and underneath the link light rail headed south, doing a, like, practice run right by the Overlake station. And the encampments are junkie thieves who ransack the neighborhood every month, and the cops have never found out where their drugs are, and they have behavioral crisis, the local businesses don't do anything about it, they just allow it to continue, then they raise the rates and say, you know, they blame all homeless or whatever. But we need, like, proper policy. And like Martin Luther King Jr., to paraphrase him, he said, judge a man's content of his character and not the skin color. But yet, if you look at the racist, woke, bottom-of-the-barrel, progressive policies that have exacerbated the public safety crisis and the homeless crisis, you have, like, people who are prioritizing the skin color percentages to manipulate the incarceration rates at the expense of public safety. And it's like, if you've got a youth who's troubled, who's repeatedly, repeatedly doing the wrong path, nobody's making an effort in the police and the community to find out the adults who keep misguiding them, and, you know, maybe incarcerate them in the juvenile detention instead of, and maybe improve the interpretation of punishment, where like the people who are working there are qualified to deal with these kids, to find out who keeps, like, sending them on the wrong path, telling them, oh, don't worry about it, you're under 18, you can do whatever the hell you want. But anyway, we need proper policies that solve, like, the issues of, like, our society imploding, and we're trying to live on the side of the road, where like, if you want to save the trees, you got to build higher than five levels of balcony, you got to have 21st century, first-world quality, you can't have out-of-state, deregulated parking garage structures that have a bunch of concrete, that warehouse echo and cosmetically purify residential units, that are paper-thin walls, that destroy the quality of living, and gouge you on the rent, like, double, triple the mortgage. It's like, if council could, like, make a proclamation or some sort of request, or even a law, that says, the local banks who own some of the 20th-century deregulated, watered-down building code real estate that's got a flaw in its pandemically closed design, maybe you could, like, ask the bank to take zero off the property values and make a whole adjustment, so the small business could, like, save some money, and the workers could make a little more than having the debt service, the oppressive middleman in the local economy? Anyway, there's a lot of issues, but you got to deal with the encampment fire, there's a huge explosion with propane tanks last night, right behind the Safeway and the 520 off-ramp that goes right to the Overlake link light rail.
Mr. Haynes?
When they were traveling last night...
Mr. Haynes, your time is up, but I think if you let our officer know where to do it...
I already did, and I told him about the problems with the junkies in the neighborhood that are the ones who blew the place up, that are going to be ransacked in Redmond and Bellevue. Stealing other people's stuff because they're still desperate, because there's not proper action.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
State county regional authority.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes, your time is up.
Prioritize repeat offenders who are conducting customs-violated crimes against humanity and pursuit of happiness while purposely persecuting and blaming innocent homeless.
Mr. Haynes?
Because the cops got something better to do.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Our next item of business is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be polled? Check and make sure we have two online. Okay. No items to be polled, this is a roll-call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes 7-0. With the passage of the consent agenda, we have a new Human Services Commissioner, Michaeline Fowler, who will be sworn in at this time. If she would like to come up, if her daughter and friends would like to come up closer, and we'll take some pictures as well, that would be great to have you up here while you're getting sworn in. Did her friend not want to come up, too? Yeah, let's go there.
Hi, I'm the city clerk, I'll be swearing you in tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the oath to you, and then if you agree at the end, you say "I do" or "I will." And then you will sign, so you just sign your name on it, and I take care of the rest of the information on the sheet of paper. All right? Raise your right hand. "Do you, Michaeline Fowler, having been duly appointed to the Human Services Commission of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office as prescribed by law and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America?" Congratulations. Welcome to Redmond. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Want to say something? Um, just... Just one second. Just one second. I can go, I can go ask the mayor.
to do this job.
Oh, thank you so much. All right, that's hard to talk. Our next item of business is, congratulations again, and thank you for bringing your family with you. Our next item of business is a staff report, Redmond 2050 Planning Commission Recommendation for Housing in Overlake. Seraphy Allen, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, as a part of Redmond 2050 Planning and Community Development, we'll introduce the Planning Commission's recommendations for updates to the following: the Housing Element and Housing Technical Appendix, housing-related zoning code amendments, Overlake-related zoning code amendments. This is the second set of six, this is the second of six sets of the Planning Commission's recommendations that the council will receive before the end of 2024. Director Helen emailed the Planning Commission reports and key exhibits to councilmembers last Wednesday. The reports, together with the exhibits and appendices, were provided in your packet as well tonight. Tonight, staff will summarize key components of the recommendations and ask councilmembers where you want to focus your discussions at the study sessions scheduled for February 13 and February 27. I am joined tonight by Jeff Churchill, Becky Frye, and Ian Lefcourt. With that as an introduction, I will turn the presentation over to Ian Lefcourt to walk us through the recommendations related... us through the recommendations related to housing.
Thank you, Seraphie. Oh, and what a guest to start a conversation with housing, Councilmember Balducci. All right. The Planning Commission voted on two different pieces for their recommendation. The first was the comprehensive plan element and the associated technical appendix as one piece, and the second piece were those regulatory amendments. So we'll go through them in turn. This first component of the Housing Element and Technical Appendix fulfills a variety of regional and local requirements and our own priorities. The policy changes largely center around two topics: ameliorating racially disparate impacts and serving affordable housing at a variety of households and sizes. The elements and technical appendix provide context and policy direction to help improve those outcomes for our community. For the next slide, the housing regulations, there's a lot on this slide. There's five chapters that are touched, but there's really four major topics. One of the topics is the Affordable Housing Allowance on Land Owned by Faith-Based Organizations and the Associated Density Bonus for that. The second is the creation of the Live/Work Units. The City of Redmond has had Live/Work Units for a while, but there's never been a fully realized chapter, so we're cleaning that up. We also have a topic about parking allocation requirements for affordable housing units specifically. So this is not the parking requirements for the whole project, but just how those parking stalls are allocated to affordable housing units within those projects. And then the last major topic is the Overlake Mandatory Inclusionary Zoning Amendments. As a reminder, the Redmond 2050 project approach is to provide bespoke amendments to our mandatory inclusionary zoning for different geographic areas as those different geographic areas receive their own updates. So this way, all the pieces move in harmony. Overlake is receiving our updates first, and so we created those bespoke IZ amendments to go along with it. The need for housing at a variety of income levels is enormous. I think we've all felt that in our daily lives, and we've seen that from the regional estimates for how much housing is needed. This slide is intended to communicate some of the ways we can make progress towards that goal. On the very left is our column of area median income. We look at what the households in those income bands need for secure housing, and we find the top blue part is largely possible to fulfill through market rate and development options. That green level is primarily served in our community by land use and tax exemptions. So that's actually where our inclusionary zoning is. It's helping put a little bit of affordable housing into those market rate developments above. And then the red and below is that direct assistance, kind of where we need those very specific affordable housing projects. Now, the very right column provides examples. There's a lot there, and some of the highlights include the fact that some of the examples appear serving different areas, right? Like partnerships is in all three. We need to have those ongoing pieces. But the main lesson here is that the City of Redmond is doing a lot and that we need to do a lot. There is no single solution for affordable housing. We need to make advantage of the tools in our toolbox. The changes to Overlake Inclusionary Zoning, lot of percents on this slide, but we're really focusing on two different levers. The set aside indicates the amount of units as a percent of all units in that development that must be cost-controlled affordable housing units. And the percent of area median income indicates the households served by that affordable housing unit. The recommended changes to inclusionary zoning is we're changing the set aside from 10% of units up to 12.5% of units. That's the set aside change. It's immediate, it's for both tenures. For the AMI level changes, they are split between rental and ownership. Ownership AMI is staying at 80%. It's not changing for ownership at all for AMI. For rental, we have a progressive step process to slowly move the AMI level for rental inclusionary zoning units from 80% to 70% to 60%, and then finally to 50% AMI. The recommended inclusionary zoning amendments are targeting 50% AMI because that's the greatest housing need for our community. Those are some of the changes that are going for affordable housing for Overlake. But to discuss the many ways that development will benefit from other changes to Overlake, I will turn the presentation over to Principal Planner Becky Frye.
So this slide represents where a lot of our work overlaps because in order to make the affordable housing changes, we are pairing it with the rezoning that we're doing in Overlake. So we're giving them and asking, trying to find a good balance between the two. So this demonstrates how in Overlake Village, we're actually doubling the baseline capacity without incentives and for residential. And in the OBAT zoning district, we're actually tripling the baseline capacity without incentives. So the analysis that Arch and Ian have done for the last several months, went through the financials of that and looked at how much gain there is from the increased density that we're going to be giving them in the base without incentives and then the additional cost for any particular changes. So this is a balanced approach. It does actually have a lot of different pieces and parts. Again, they overlap and intertwine a lot of the work that we're doing from a housing perspective and Overlake, but you need to see both parts to understand the cohesiveness of the approach that we're taking. And then I'll go through and share with you the Planning Commission's recommendations on the centers and Overlake policies and the Overlake Code Package. Just a reminder, when we started out, this was a part of our centers element, and that centers element is now going to disappear, and these pieces are going to be in our new community development and design chapter. But since we got started with Overlake a lot earlier, the Planning Commission is making a recommendation on this subset of that chapter, which is currently still in review, just so we can set that aside and focus on the other pieces, downtown Marymore and the design standard updates, et cetera. For the actual policies that we're looking at for general centers and Overlake, the big overarching theme really focuses in on accommodating growth and the themes of equity and inclusion, sustainability, and resiliency. So much of the changes that we'll see in the policies are focused around those two primary implementation tasks. The are, other revisions include expanding the metro center boundary. It's going to fold up and now include most of Microsoft, Nintendo, and all of the other offices development, and include the intersection of 148th and 51st. We did include the intersection and the highway ramps because if you're inside the center, the eligibility for grant funding for those projects, we just are eligible for them if they're in the center. So we just wanted to make sure we captured any projects that are going to be needed to be serving Overlake. The other major piece of this update is maximizing transit-oriented development focused around the light rail stations, but there are other forms of TOD. So that did include adopting a brand-new transit-oriented development focus area, which is what you see in the pink in the upper right on the slide, establishing TOD design standards for the first time in OBAT. We have design standards around TOD in Overlake Village right now, but not in OBAT. And removing barriers to TOD. The other thing that we've really been focusing on is what does equitable TOD look like and what are our goals and how are we going to implement equity in the transition to the TOD format? And so that has been a really significant focus of the work that we've been working on. Another really new idea in this work is the establishment of cultural districts with the Overlake Inter-cultural District being the very first district, but allowing us to potentially add more in the future. This district helps to recognize the existing history and importance of that area, of the different ethnic grocery stores and restaurants, and just how that's a huge part of Overlake's identity, and helping to maintain that in the future as we start to redevelop that area. Finding ways to deal with anti-displacement, future focusing on maybe highlighting that as a part of the placemaking, including signage, and making it really a part of the identity as you drive into that area, you feel the multicultural and intercultural aspect of our community. It does not mean that that's the only place in our community that we're focusing on this, by the way, but it is the first one. And just to clarify, we're establishing the district, but it'll evolve over time. The Arts and Cultural District, One Redmond, there's a number of different pieces that There are a number of really big changes. For instance, we are less than half the policies, and we've really simplified the format so that people could really get to the nitty-gritty and understand what the main focus is going to be. We are also doing a massive amount of upzoning, zoning consolidation, and a brand-new zoning district. So there's some pretty significant changes. I just mentioned the residential capacity, doubling in Overlake Village and tripling in OBAT, but we're also increasing capacity for non-residential uses. So there's a lot of changes going on from that perspective, a lot of design standard updates, including things for taller buildings, parking garages, and that sort of thing, just looking at urban forms and format. We've been expanding the uses in Overlake to make sure that we're an around-the-clock center and a complete neighborhood. For example, in OBAT today, your only food and beverage you're allowed to do is a convenience store, and so we're going to be changing that to all food and beverages are going to be allowed in OBAT, including restaurants and bars. And so we're definitely looking at how to make sure that it's a complete community, it's a lively community, making sure that food trucks, kiosks, all those urban things that we would like to see are definitely allowed uses in a part of that neighborhood. And then lastly, one of the other major changes in this update are to the creation of a brand-new incentive program. This completely replaces our existing program. It expands it to a point-based menu of options system. It expands the types of incentives, including anti-displacement, inclusive design, mass timber, and a number of other city priorities. I just wanted to point out that we have incorporated both the cost of the item and city prioritization, so that if it's a really high priority item but a very low cost, it doesn't have just a few number of points. We still want it to be an attractive option for people to choose, and in fact, maybe even more so because it is a low-cost item and a really high priority. So we've rolled that in there. And I also wanted to point out that we have set up the point structure so that it is heavily loaded at the front end, and there are a number of things that we may only need one, two, or three of, and they'll expire. Or we are only going to need them for a couple of years, and then we'll etch off the points. So it is very heavily loaded at the front end for those catalyst projects, for those things that we want to see as we transition to the new code, and then the points will ebb over time. It will also be a living incentive program, and so we will evaluate in several years the things that we want to change and focus on, and so we'll just be adjusting that over The testing phase that we went through at late last, late 2022 and early 2023, one of the big pieces of feedback that we got is there's a lot of code changes, and it was getting really confusing to the community as following which one. So one of the changes that we did is we consolidated the Redmond Zoning Code rewrite items that were similar to or complementary to Redmond 2050 items into the same packages. And that was really evident in Overlake, and you'll see that these things from the Redmond Zoning Code were brought forward in the Overlake Code Package, including public art, which was essentially just codifying our existing process for the first time, a brand-new solid waste section. We are needing to address new urban forms, composting. We have garbage being picked up inside of parking garages in buildings too, so needing to make sure that there's new standards. So that's moving forward. And then of council's great interest, Jenny Liebke's been working on the update to the Green Building Program. That was brought forward with the Overlake Package as well. And the definitions for the Redmond Zoning Code were combined with Redmond 2050, and they were brought forward with Overlake so that they were adopted first. And Jenny Liebke will be joining us for the study session, so I'm just going to really quickly do the Green Building overview. It was very closely coordinated between what we were doing with Overlake and what she was doing from a citywide, so that it's a similar point structure, the exact same items and value of the items. It is also voluntary, point-based, the more you do, the more you get. She has included performance standards and a performance period. What that means is instead of actually requiring very specific actions, she's looking towards very specific outcomes. So if there's multiple paths getting to a particular outcome, they can choose that however they want to do. There's multiple certifications you could choose. You don't have to go through one particular pathway, for instance. And then this slide just shows how there's a lot of different pieces and parts. I just wanted to point out that the technical guide here really provides a lot of information for the very first time, very specific information on how the program would work. It also includes a lot of new ideas and updates. So one of the biggest things for Jenny in the updating to the Green Building Program is making sure that it matches the changes that are coming in the building code, regional sustainability goals and targets, and making sure that we're all working in the right direction and achieving the goals and getting the community ready to achieve the changes that are happening at a state level even. And it's introducing new things like embodied carbon goals and water conservation as well. So there's a lot going forward, and in the study session, Jenny will be here, and she'll be able to answer a lot of those questions for you. And that is it for today. We would hope that we could get your questions for what you want to talk about in your study sessions. We do have two scheduled for the 13th and the 27th. If you come up with questions after today, we ask you to just email Seraphie, and she can get that to staff so we can be prepared. Based on the number of questions and the type of questions, we'll put staff at particular dates. So if you could get your questions to us by Thursday at noon, that would be helpful. And Kim Dietz will also be joining us for study sessions for questions on the Green Building, excuse me, on the Zoning Code Rewrite.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you so much, Ms. Frye and team. So I'm going to open up for questions, and I might suggest to, especially if you have many questions, maybe share them out loud and then follow up with an email. So that will short the typing, I see, that would be helpful to them. And once again, Thursday, if you have more questions to send to them, so we can set up the study sessions properly, but my staff is, they know they're not answering any questions tonight, so we're going to try to keep that part to a minimum. So I, I'm going to offer to go down the line if we want to start with Ms. Anderson. Would that be all right with you, Ms. Anderson?
That's fine, but I have no questions.
All right.
Magic.
Okay. Well, if you think of anything, please send them in. Ms. Noye, you're a council member.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
That means they left the bucket empty for me. No, but in all seriousness, I can't let the moment pass without saying thank you, thank you, thank you, just to bookend the meeting. We started the meeting with Councilmember Balducci sharing what an awesome partner the City of Redmond is when it comes to these topics, especially around housing. That credit goes to you all. So yes, exactly. Thank you, Becky, for cheering on your colleague there. Okay, some of the things, I'll put this in an email, but some of the things that I am interested in studying in our upcoming sessions, I'm really grateful that Jenny's coming to talk about the Green Building Program, so thank you. I am interested in a couple of the character and design pieces. It may not be the most burning thing, but it is something that we get a lot of questions about, and so for us to all have a couple of examples from this particular policy and all look around the room and say, we all agree to this, right? That would be helpful, I think. Obviously, I have a lot of questions about Overlake if we have the time. Okay, the relationship between the buildings and the streets is another one of those like nearly-designed questions. Okay, but the big ones, Overlake incentives, I think we should take a peek at them. I understand it was quite the heavy lift from the Planning Commission. I'd also, so I'd like to study them, and I'd also like to understand how that process of update will move into the future. I'm glad you mentioned solid waste tonight, Ms. Frye, because I did have a couple of questions on that, particularly how we're going to manage not just the solid waste, but our dream to, dreams of... but our dream to, dreams of a higher level of diversion, and what needs to be happening in those buildings and the way that they're designed to achieve that. So I just want to double-check that we're taking care of that. I'm trying to leave some space for my fellow colleagues here, but I guess the next big one would be the story of the inclusionary zoning recommendations and the multifamily tax exemption tools. The thing about these tools is, like, some of our colleagues are headed to DC in a couple of months or in a month, and I'm sure that they'll go to a session about, like, here's what you got to do to have affordable housing, and the answer will be do inclusionary zoning, which we have a lot of practice with here in our city, and here we are proposing some really particular refinements to continue to produce more housing. So I think it'd be helpful for us to study them and really understand the implications of the recommendations. And similarly, Fee and Lou, I would just like us to make sure we understand what the new recommendations are there. We have a bright, shiny example of a recent win in our city, and there's a lot of hanging our hopes, I would say, in community on that particular tool, so it'd be helpful to understand it a bit better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll next go to Councilmember Salahuddin.
Thank you, and really appreciate this presentation. Just, I will also follow up with email, but two quick questions were just the proposal for the AMI and percent set aside for the stepwise decrease in the AMI, 80% down to 50%. Just, you know, I've been looking at previous Planning Commission, you know, information, just a little bit more discussion around that would be great, and just more clarity on that decision in here. And then really, really appreciate the Intercultural District, and I think that that's going to be really positive for the community. I would love to just get some more information on that, on the process that we see and the inclusion that we're hoping to get out of this district, so really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. I'm going to go to Councilmember Forsyth, I think, Council Vice President Forsyth, if I can remember who's in what order.
That is correct. Thank you. Just a couple of things I'm interested in studying when we get to this. I had to go back and refresh my memory from our Housing Action Plan, and our metric for success for 2030 was 60% AMI, so as Councilmember Salahuddin said, I'm really also interested in that topic of looking at AMI. I thought we had lowered our 80 to 60, so I'm kind of interested in having a bit more conversation about how everything still says 60, exploring some of these more creative options about you get 50, if you get two units at 50%, that covers your 80%. Just diving into that a bit more. And then I'm also interested in studying further the points charts and really kind of having us dive into those and really actually have some time to talk about that, because that is some policy that has some lasting implications, and I'm excited by the work that you've put forward, but I think it deserves some airtime for us to discuss.
Thank you. And next I have Councilmember Fields.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, everything's been covered either in the presentation or by questions. I do have one, it's kind of obscure, probably a minor issue, but I am curious about it. As we move forward with our rewrites and with our codes, what happens to specific development agreements that might be getting left behind? Things that might be 10, 15, 20, or even longer in their life? And do we get an opportunity to update those specific units and make them consistent with the rest of the city, or do they just linger on? And that's a question for another day.
No, that's a great question. Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Last but not least, Council President Forsyth, or Critzer, oh my gosh, I think I'm just like habits from two years. Okay.
Well, thank you. And I'll say, most of my colleagues have covered a lot of the topics. I guess I will echo to what some others said in terms of what I think might be helpful in our study session. You know, you all have been spending a lot of time deep diving with our Planning Commission on each of these topics, and some of them are really big new ideas that would be great for us to just delve into a little bit, have a discussion on things like the faith-based housing opportunities, live-work units, the Intercultural District, and being able to just kind of hear from you all about the vision of where we would go if we put this into our comp plan, and to be able to get any feedback from the council on how we kind of shape those pieces, as well as a couple of the other ones that show up in here and I won't repeat. I would say glad to have the topics everyone else raised. I think one thing that I would add as a question for the inclusionary zoning conversation is that I've heard some questions and feedback just around the actual model that we use to be able to get to those numbers and to be able to look at how that's workable. So I think understanding the process that you went through to develop the model, who in the community you engaged, I understand you engaged a variety of different stakeholders, I think that would be really helpful for the council to understand as we get feedback from the community on that particular topic. But just also want to say thank you to you all and also to our Planning Commission for this really deep work on all of this, excited to dig in. And then last one that I think wasn't raised that I wanted to add, actually two more. One is the Metro Center Boundary Expansion would be great to just touch upon that and to understand, to kind of look at what we have now and where we're going to be so that we understand the scope of that change and the kind of neighborhood areas that will be affected, what that's going to look like. And kind of related to that, there's a piece within the housing policy element that relates to housing policy changes that show up in the neighborhood plans, and I think it would just be helpful to get a brief overview of some of those. It seems like it's basically applying the same standard across the board to most of our different neighborhoods, in particular in regards to middle housing, but if there are anything, other things that you flag, and to know a little bit about the process that you use to engage the people in those neighborhoods so they're aware of these changes would be really great. Big discussions and looking forward to those.
I know there's a lot of equity pieces in that particular conversation, we'd be happy to share, for sure.
Great. Thank you, President Critzer. I get it right sometimes. Thank you, staff. I think that council will forward any other questions to you and look forward to the conversations coming up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is Ombud's report. We will finish up January with Councilmember Fields and then dive into February with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I don't have anything new to add. There were a couple items that I had mentioned before that on access to the Redmond pool and some rent issues. We did, I did talk with Director Helen and Director Hamilton, followed up on that, and I don't have anything to add tonight, so move on to February.
Well, thanks so much, and February.
Sure. I've had a couple of emails for February. First up was a complaint about Lime scooters, and I've connected with that resident a couple of times. The photo was pretty egregious. It was three scooters in the middle of a crosswalk, really a big safety issue for pedestrians in a busy intersection. So followed up with them and staff, hoping we can do some more public outreach about, you know, safe parking of those scooters and being responsible. We had an email from a resident about Emerald Heights construction and construction parking along the area and sightlines, looking to staff to help me figure that one out, and had another email about West Lake Sammish and bike safety. I'll be getting back to that resident with some of the policy work that we're doing and some of the staff information about CIP projects for that area. Also had an email tonight from a developer on 2050 and affordable housing and some of the things they would like us to consider. On a personal ombuds note, I've communicated with some civic response advocacy groups about our reimagining public safety discussion and, excuse me, and connected about our CRO and an incident that occurred with the CRO and the local school, and had a follow-up with a resident about electrification and moving our buildings to electric power. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I testified on behalf of the city in support of the Rerap Act that was in the Senate, so it was SB 6005. This is legislation that we continue to support to transform the recycling system in our state and ensure that producers are responsible for the waste that they generate. On that note, four of us went to Olympia last week, so that was a lot of fun. Thanks to Amy Tsai for helping to facilitate that meeting with our delegation. That was really great. I happened to be meeting with Chief Lowe in the Public Safety Building, and so I just learned that it was Cheryl Mullins's retirement last week. I know she's a fan of these meetings and sometimes watches till the very end, so just in case, I just wanted to give a shout-out to her. Congratulations on her retirement, 35 years in 911 telecommunications and public service, most recently as our police support civilian commander. And my understanding is she's headed to Disney, so I hope she really enjoys some Mickey waffles for all of us. I had a couple of visitors in my office hours. I had an Overlake resident stop by to chat about her interest in promoting the Chinese community and a particular event coming up, and communicated with her and the mayor's office on a proclamation request, and was also able to share back that the city recently did celebrate Chinese-American History Month. It was great to get her plugged in, also was able to plug her in to the folks at the Performing Arts Center East Side in Bellevue, because I think that that could be a good fit for what she's looking for. And I had a second resident who wanted to discuss the outcome of the Planning Commission's recommendations on housing regulations. And then I've got a couple of other issues that I'm still following up with and getting support from Planning and Community Development on. Thanks.
Any other ombuds items? Council President?
I had a couple discussions with some residents and some emails and with my new office hours, which actually I did want to note for anyone who's typically coming, they're going to be the first and third Friday of the month at 3:00 at Soul Food Coffee. This next week, I will not be there, so don't come next week, but if you want to have a one-on-one with me, you can also just email me to schedule time. And so far, I've had some really great discussions. I talked with a resident last week about some concerns around the city, around ADA accessibility, as well as safety and getting around kind of bike-ped vision, and also just being able to be a part of understanding city processes and how we make some of these decisions. I also met with some residents around greener buildings and also some questions around how the city might be able to take a position on some state legislation and some questions around some specific legislation that might be able to affect our city. I also had some folks reach out to me about some of the policies we just had the staff report on and wanting to give some feedback on those, asking some questions. I also was invited and joined with Councilwoman Salahuddin at an event celebrating work in our community around cricket and some of our award-winning teams that have won some national competitions, as well as a month-long girls' cricket clinic that went on in one of our East Side Cricket community areas, and it was just great to be able to connect with that community, and they were really excited about some of the new infrastructure we're going to be putting in in Redmond, so that was really cool. Unfortunately, I'll have to end this on a bit of a sad note, which is that I also did hear some updates from some Indian-American community members that felt that their communities have recently been specifically targeted with robberies and some particular issues, and wanted to be able to reach out about that topic. So we had heard about some of that happening previously, and I had flagged it for our police chief, but I'll be following up on that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. A community member also reached out to me and also trying to connect her with our police chief as well, because he will come out to communities and have conversations with people, and his staff will, so there have been some concerning happenings in our area, and so we want to make sure that community members know what their rights are, what resources are available, and that, as Chief Lowe would say, when you call, we come. So then we want to make sure our community members know that. Any other ombuds items? Seeing none, are there any committee reports? Councilmember Stewart, hesitantly holding her hand up.
I will navigate back to that tab. Yes, I attended the Growth Management Planning Board, and we had a great caucus meeting. We had a little bit of extra time, so we actually went around and shared what exciting things were going on in everybody's cities. It was kind of a nice community builder. In this month's meeting, we had a state legislative session update, obviously, as that continues to just wind down. There is an interesting tool on the PSRC website that they're promoting just to help visualize the impacts of the various TOD proposals that are going around, so you can check that out. The big discussion item was our regional centers monitoring. This is going to be a big scope of work over the next three years. It's really interesting. I will send this link to the council because there's some recent data that has been populated into how the centers are currently performing, and obviously here in Redmond, we have the Redmond Downtown Growth Center and then the Metro Center in Overlake. We're going to be studying, are these centers working? Are there centers that need to be redesignated in '25 and '26? So a great conversation there. We also heard from our Equity Advisory Committee about their recent experience. They had a few million dollars to take projects, transportation project requests, and to study how better to address equity through a couple of different methodologies that are now, I hear, being picked up in some of the other transportation funding areas at PSRC. So we heard a report back on what those projects are, but more importantly, what was learned about how to better address this as we go forward with our regional equity strategy. Thanks.
Thanks so much, and thanks for bringing up the PSRC equity work. We also heard a presentation and approved projects in PSRC Exec Committee, and the ask ahead of them was to, going to create a, share with us, like, the actions that they took and how cities could use that work that they've done, because they have a really robust equity group. And I think not just our jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions will be able to use that information and not necessarily have to staff themselves in the same way. So really exciting work and excellent that we were able to fund six projects throughout the region, just kind of see how they, how things roll out. So it was really exciting. And Council President Critzer was there with me as well, so I know she got to hear the presentation as well, but very exciting.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. Earlier this evening, we had our Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We had a packed agenda with nine items. Coming up on our consent agenda on February 20th is the acceptance of a bunch of projects that we approved final contract on as well. This includes things like another one of our wastewater pump stations and some of the awesome new Flashing Beacon Crosswalk projects. So appreciate that. We are going to, again, have conversation on February 20th. You will see on New Business, a funding request for an additional $3.7 million for the Redmond Senior and Community Center, and we had a robust discussion on that earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Salahuddin? Say it for me one more time.
Salahuddin.
Salahuddin.
There we go. Very brief, earlier this evening, Council President Critzer, Councilmember Stewart, and I joined the Community Facilities District meetings, and I have the honor of serving as the vice chair for CFD 2016, and Councilmember Stewart, Supervisor Stewart in that role will be the chair of the 2014 Communities Facilities District, so really exciting news there.
Great. Thank you so much. Council President?
I attended the Riot Eight Salmon Recovery Council meeting, and following that, I'm also serving on the Legislative Subcommittee for Riot Eight, and we joined with about 60 different salmon recovery entities all across the state last Wednesday to go to Olympia all day and to be able to advocate with one voice and one agenda for the first time in a salmon day on the hill, where we talked about some of the key priorities that we see across the boards for needs for funding for salmon recovery, as well as some policies that, you know, will be critical in terms of being able to get good projects off the ground, and especially making sure that we look at kind of equitable access to state funds. So looking at things, for example, reducing metro requirements and also streamlining permitting processes as possible. So anyway, some good discussions with legislators, a lot of real support for So anyway, some good discussions with legislators, a lot of real support for a lot of our local priorities that we join with other jurisdictions around the state on. And really cool to just see that collaboration, because as we see with the salmon, they don't know our jurisdictional boundaries. They have to travel all the way through all the different streams, and it takes us all working together to make sure that we have really healthy ecosystems. So great to be able to be a part of that.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Seeing none. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We do have an executive session. It's to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease, RCW 4230-110-1C, for 30 minutes at the time. So we will join the executive session. Takes us a few minutes to get there, so executive session will start at 8:40. At the time of adjournment of the executive session, action is expected to be taken at that time in open session per state law. The executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting. And those of you at the dais, if you could leave this meeting as well, if you've joined, ensure, and then we'll come back in in the other meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're back to our business meeting from executive session. And I would like to open it up for conversation. Council President, do you either want to make a motion or do you want to have a discussion? How would you want to play this?
I'll make a motion and then if we want to have discussion on the motion.
That sounds great.
I move to authorize the mayor to pursue transfer of land located at 16725 Cleveland Street to Plymouth Housing for council consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, but I think it's 16715.
Oh, is it?
Let us ensure the correct address. Others had 25. Just a moment.
I see it at 25 in materials that we have on it.
It's 16725.
There we go.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So the motion is as it stands.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I will open it up for discussion. Councilmember Anderson.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to remove the term to Plymouth Housing.
There has been a motion to remove the term to Plymouth Housing. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies without a second. Discussion on this, whoop, there's a hand. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, sorry. I will second that motion, mostly to understand it better.
Okay, thank you so much. There has been a second on the motion to remove to Plymouth Housing from the motion. Discussion, Councilmember Anderson.
Sure. What the action, more broad action gives you more authority to consider other partners as well in the effort that was discussed in executive session.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none for this amendment to the mo, oh, sorry. Councilmember Stewart.
I will be voting no on this motion because this project doesn't exist without the conditions associated with the project owner at this point, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Noiva Camina.
Second, same as Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote to strike the words to Plymouth Housing at the end of the motion, starting with Council President. Critzer.
No.
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 And that fails six to one. Next back to the original motion is their discussion. Council President.
I would just like to note that one key part of this motion is council consideration at a future meeting. This motion would authorize the mayor to pursue this particular topic on behalf of the city and to be able to do the work related to it, but the actual final decision would still be pending at a future meeting and as, and I would work with Council Vice President Forsyth to make sure that we schedule that meeting and notice it for the public as soon as possible.
Thank you. Council, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I'm excited to vote in favor of this. I, I think that there's a great opportunity in front of us and, but I also appreciate the conversation that was had that we need to have more conversation in the public. So this motion is a great way for us to show our commitment and continue to show our commitment transparency and continue to have these important conversations in the public eye.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, it's clearly been a night of housing and while there's an opportunity for us to continue to explore and that's what we are voting on with this motion, there's also great conversation ahead of us with community and to learn more. Plymouth Housing, being stated in the motion, you know, is, is the, it's pretty clear, the topic of conversation for this particular motion, and I'm just eager to have the rest of the conversation here with the public so that we can continue to make informed choices along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, I would just like to ask a question of the city attorney, just to be clear, and I believe I'm clear, but I want confirmation. The motion as made gives the mayor the authority to pursue, as we discussed in executive session, some of the aspects and technicalities with and when we use the words for council consideration, that means a definitive decision about the project itself. And, and based on public discussion and public input and public discussion by the council, we will decide whether we move forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you. As mentioned by Council Vice President Forsyth, this is a really exciting opportunity and I am in favor of the motion as, as suggested by Council President Critzer, and also want to, you know, triply echo Councilmember Stewart in that I'm really excited for the opportunity to have a discussion with community members and, and explore this, this further, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
I will not be supporting this motion this evening, partly because we have not had adequate time to consider as a council the outcomes of what this would look like. It was sort of a surprise decision and action, and I don't believe that we should step in and be the hero. I understand why folks want to do that, but I don't, I feel like we're going to get ourselves into trouble in the future, so I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noiva Camina.
Thank you. I'll be, I will be supporting this tonight because I believe that we've stated very clearly what our values are as a city, what we've deemed as being a priority, and life doesn't always go the way that we planned, and sometimes we'll have an opportunity that does come across that has a very short lifetime, as in how long do we have to, to do that? And I believe that if we are, as leadership, making decisions based on our guiding principles and our values and what we said is already a priority, we'll figure out the rest as we go along.
Thank you. What's that? Yeah, Councilmember Fields, do you have another question? Your hand is still up.
Well, both, actually. I did notice it was still up, and I do have another comment.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So I respect and agree with Councilmember Anderson's concerns and caution on this. The reason I asked the question of our city attorney, because I feel that, that we will have the opportunity, and I'm hoping that the council leadership and the rest of the council takes that opportunity to actually make sure that with the speed of this and with the opportunity that came out of a, sort of an abnormal methodology for us, that we can, we can deal with it and we can discuss it and we can make a decision. So I will be supporting this motion with the concern and cautions that Councilmember Anderson expressed, but I believe that we will be able to mitigate that and have a, a very healthy and successful conversation.
Thank you. Council President.
Actually, one, one last question, just to make sure that this motion does legally makes sense. Would it be better to have the words council decision at a future meeting or is consideration sufficient to be clear that we are directing the mayor to not make a decision but to that the, it will remain in the council's purview?
I, I think you could do it either way. Authorization to pursue something does not grant authorization to dispose of land, and so in my view, it does not authorize any sort of disposition of the property. So if you wanted to change that, that's certainly fine, but I don't think that it include, or it does not include authorization to do anything without council's further action and consideration and possible approval.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and I would just say that to be transparent, since I think it's clear Plymouth Housing is, is an affordable housing provider, what we're talking about would be the potential to be able to have more affordable housing in our city and, and given our goals in our housing action plan, and I think as, as Councilmember Noiva Camina put it really well, you know, the values that we've clearly stated, I think it's, it's really worth pursuing, and I just want to emphasize that this motion is really about making sure that we can stay in the conversation and potentially capitalize on a great opportunity to be able to bring some more affordable housing into our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this motion? Right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Council President, could you read the motion one more time, just to, so we're all clear?
I move to authorize the mayor to pursue transfer of land located at 16725 Cleveland Street to Plymouth Housing for council consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Critzer.
Aye.
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 No.
And that passes six to one. Thank you all very much for the robust conversation, and I will work with the council leadership to ensure that we put a meeting about this very soon on the agenda, so. And with that, that was our last item of business this evening. There is, where are we? That concludes our business items for this meeting. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great night.